Member wishes to vote differently, please let me know. Thank you. So could I call on councillor Stevenson, first white paper?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. A recent report in the Institute of School Studies that children from better off households are spending 75 minutes of their educational activities and appears from poor households during lockdown. Because a reopening of schools has not yet been placed gaps in this anti-shubers and their customers doubled three weeks by September. This is why it's so important that we reopen schools for all pupils by September at least. It's also the reason why I welcome the government's £1 billion Covid catch-up and congratulate the Conservative Charity Commission for curate. Because of this direct investment, disadvantaged children lead more benefits as the entire education system wraps around them to help work through time loss during lockdown. A few moments ago before tea break, Lord Councillor exercised the last thought for the summer activity programme, yet it's the administration that's been in those wanting to keep schools closed until September. Anybody concerned about the education outcomes of social mobility technology, why it's been so damaging to keep children out of school? Indeed, relative to councillor Blake's comments just now. She will note four former Labour Secretary of State gave damning verdicts on the action teaching unions and encouraging school staff to work against June reopening. Lord Blunkett went further by accusing the unions of working against the interests of children by taking them at home despite all the evidence pointing to longer term impact of the term. It is disappointing that council did not have a leadership role in encouraging schools to reopen more widely in Newton. But we thank those school leaders, staff, governors and parents who've been working tirelessly to support their pupils during the pandemic. They stood up for what they thought was the right thing to do. They're the courage to win all the more militant amendments and as such, each have the thanks of parents right across this city. Across Europe, pupils have been getting an advantage from school children lead. Denmark's school reopened on the 15th April. Austria, Germany, France and Greece pupils have been back in classrooms since May. It is a fact that the longer less pupils remain outside of educational settings, wider gap between most affluent and the poorest pupils will grow. My word, Mayor, the red back normality will be a bump one, but the commitment of a £1 billion Covid catch-up plan alongside additional £1.7 million for new school rebuild, repair and upgrade will surely help that journey. It should be a priority for the city that all children and people are back in school in September at the very latest. And I therefore propose this motion calling the council to actively facilitate that endeavour. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Sorry, thank you. Can I have a second?
Thank you very much, Lee Lord Mayor. And it's a pleasure to follow on councillor Stevenson and to second this white paper. Simply because I believe it's a statement of intent. A statement of intent not only about getting our kids back in September, which glad to see that colleagues from across the chamber have mentioned, but also to support two of our schools that are in desperate need of a rebuild. And it has been a flagrant issue among councils over the past few months, but particularly about Royd and Webby. And before I go any further, because I'm sending this motion, I want to call the amendments that are going to be put forward later, very briefly. In the amendment that will be put forward by Labour Party, I suspect councillor Prior and his colleagues will be repeating many of their speeches and their comments they've already had. Councillor Blake said there was a lack of confidence that parents had in schools. Well, as councillor Stevenson has said, that was also a lack of clarity that came on the top of Lee Diddy Kettle from councillor Blake and from councillor Prior touring the various different papers in their comments to make sure that they went away of whether these schools were going to be opened from the top. So as well, and others have said that education is not a priority for the Conservative group. Councillor Prior and colleagues tell that of the Webby Ward councillors who've secured half of the funding to rebuild Webby High School. And also say that when it comes to rights, they've been left behind by councillors of all and various colours. And the reason for this repair is due to years of neglect by this authority, patched up by Labour Party. For example, let's not forget, yes, 10 years, the austerity that councillor By will include his speech would be for that. 30 years of government deprimacy, education, education. And in that time, what happened for Royds? Well, they didn't even fix the sun was shining under a late government. So when Labour members stand up and say those come later on, just reflect on those. Because this can be a statement of intent. A statement of intent can come from every single member across the council to say that we prioritise our kids' education, putting them back in school ASAP, rather than dithering around and blaming it on each other because you don't want to support a government of political purposes. The simple fact is that National Public Research in 2017 by Education Policy Institute said it's more than any other authority in England in 2017. The gap at the end of primary school where disadvantaged kids were worse off in all approvals nationally than in any other authority across the country. And as councillor Stevenson said, the officials have all of said, the beginning throughout this crisis, there could even potentially be an attainment gap, why as much as 75% because of coronavirus between those who either potentially disadvantaged and was of better appearance. So when we talk about office. Can I finish your sentence? You've got apprentices about build, 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 so submit them relations, get them in and let's get those schools rebuilt. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Forster?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to add my profound thanks to all the teachers, teachers, support officers who have worked so hard to assure that most vulnerable children and most of key workers continue to be offered an education school. Provided pupils remaining at home resorts for their education, free school meals, vouchers for those entitled to them during the very difficult first month of the Covid pandemic. I also applaud all those parents and carers who homeschooled their children. The government has issued guidance for the full opening of schools in September. However, many head teachers, teachers, unions and not least parents have expressed their deep concerns about how this can work. But this week, we're hearing scientists and medical professionals that we should expect a second wave of the coronavirus pandemic in the autumn and winter, with possibly more than double the number of deaths than we've already seen. Schools are back to business as usual in September with 30 children in Australia, albeit organised in boroughs. There will be no social distancing, a likelihood of a second wave becomes much higher. So what could be done? This is a capacity issue in terms of facilities staffing. Education does not always have to be in schools, other facilities in the community could be used. There's very little impact on children, of the impact on children's health of the Covid 19 emergency lockdown, especially though already disadvantaged due to inequality and health issues. But we know what is good for our mental and physical health, so let's give children many more opportunities for outdoor playing games, use our natural green spaces more and create more opportunities for art activities. Now, these have to be delivered in school presses, but they could all be used to deliver core parts of curriculum like the numeracy. And join up thinking that it can blend with joint creation and use of volunteers in the community. The National Gardens allows for a more flexible curriculum until next summer. This proposal fits well with our own 3A strategy, particularly priorities one and three. School needs to encamp plan for the whole year to create confidence for parents, school staff and not least the children in education being provided. These remarkable education staff have already gone above and beyond what might be expected of them and are now completing yet more risk assessments in January, September. We need to offer them all our support and provide with more capacity to perform a flexibly different curriculum. Government needs to provide the necessary financial support. And I would add that the calls for that be more locally, more local support to that. But if this is lacking in the proposal, this proposal gives leads another opportunity to provide the initiative and leadership that's already shown in a way that's managed the Covid crisis so far. Please support this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Dave Blackburn?
I second and reserve the right to speak.
Councillor Prior?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I just want to talk through some of the changes the Labour members include. First of all, we wanted to amend this white paper to make sure that we are putting on record our thanks to all school staff, echoing a lot of comments that have gone from people from multiple parties earlier in this meeting. And we're really proud of how leads pulled together over the crisis. And yes, it is vital that children return to school in a safe way. But turning to government funding. The issue around the government funding, which I know councillor Stevenson was very quick to raise, is there's no indication of which schools will benefit. It's spread over 10 years. Lead pupils need decent points now. And I recently wrote a week ago to the Secretary of State asking once again for the government to help rebuild Webby Royds. And this was not the first time I've contacted the government on this. The first time I did it was two years ago when I'd been in the job a couple of weeks. I even asked Oclanie for how to set this work cross-artic, and I'm afraid the letter was received and the spirit was sent in. The issue of all places is not one that is going to go away. And we've done all we can as leads, but now the government needs to start prioritising education. They face a backlog of maintenance in the region of £100 million. And the money receiving governments carrying out these repairs is 6.1 million. Benter Mark has been mentioned, councillor then mentioned it in the minutes. Yes, we use a huge number of different pots of money to fund rebuild because government wouldn't fund it. Councillor Forster said that this motion would be a statement of intent to ask for funding. Well, I'm delighted councillor Forster has finally started listening to some of my speeches, I know. Some on the other side always want to listen to the administration. But this is something we've been going on about for years. And councillor Forster is absolutely right as well. I will be repeating the asks I've made because they have been delivered. Webby is 13 million. And yes, I'm working with the Webby Ward members there to develop a plan to fund the other half. But money, as councillor Forster stated, well councillor Forster said the money's secured. It's not. That money requires the authorisation from Secretary of State, which we don't have yet. Royd's is 28 million. The need for rebuild of Royds has been going on for years and this is highlighted to the government on more than one occasion and they have done nothing. And blaming a Labour government, which was a decade ago, for a decade of inaction from the Tories was a real stretch. Particularly given issues around boys and windows have developed over the past few years. The recent announced funding of around 1.6 billion is an absolute drop in the ocean when you compare it to the 6.76 billion the National Order Office said was needed in 2017 to bring schools in England up to satisfactory standard. Who knows how much work is needed now after another three years of government inaction? The amendment on government duty by children and families lead, something I hope all members can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To correct councillor Prior, this isn't a Labour Party amendment. This is one that is also supported by the Liberal Democrat group as well. And I'll start this seconded by pointing out to the likes of councillor Forster that just because you are opposition does not mean to say that you will always criticize. And I have certainly not been shy of criticizing this council in the past in terms of its record on education. But in this particular case, and in particular about the funding of school buildings, it is egregious for the official opposition to try and pass all the blame for lack of investment and for the rigour that you have to go through as a local authority to try and get new places in the schools where you need them. To try and pass that blame on to the administration is wrong and it needs to be called out. I have to say, the motion which has been put forward by Conservative group, it reckons to talk about the need of children. But actually, if you read it, it's far more concerned about emphasising all the action which is being taken by their politicians, both nationally and locally. And the emphasis on the children is about getting through school dates on a particular deadline. Kids are not commodities to be used in what councillor Cumming called earlier the mixed economy of schools. Especially when that mixed economy is dominated almost wholeheartedly by academies. And to actually think that children should be used to get the economy going and to get a headline for any politician, whether it's national or local, is wrong. The children that we have in our schools are part of families. And the way that you get children back in school is to make those families confident that those children are going back into an environment which is fulfilling for them and good to their education. And also to give the parents the confidence that then going back to work to allow the children back into school will be something we say for them to do as well. And all the infrastructure around it, like school transport is also looked into. Which brings us back to the issue of Royd's school. I am a governor at that school. I know how many times that the administration, whether it was joint administration or whether it was Labour administration, have asked for money from government. And that money has not come forward. latterly, it is because all new investment only associated with new academies. And that is the basic problem for like Webby and Royds that are so-called orphan schools, not orphan schools, they are traditional community schools. And those communities should be supported through fairness to get the investment that they need for schools. And it's not supposed to be targeted at academies.
Thank you. Councillor Lam?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. From the incorrect this time, speaking in support of councillor Stevenson's white paper. The first thing I want to do is to make clear that we have not one but two excellent schools in my ward. And I would hate to give the impression because build is not the purpose, there's anything wrong with the education. Quite the opposite. We have a fantastic school in Webby, great leadership, brilliant teachers, fantastic students and great ethos. That's what makes a brilliant school and that's why they deserve a building that matches what they're being inside. So I would also absolutely underline that fact. Also, I think it's important to remind council that to maintain school by the local authority. It's the local authority's responsibility to maintain that school. And it's because the local authority hasn't done that, the building is in the state scene. It goes way back, 12, 13, 14 years since all these issues were flagged up. So I'm sorry councillor Golden, councillor Prior, it does go back to the previous government. It's not only the last couple of years that this has gone the agenda, this is a longstanding issue. As councillor Prior acknowledged, and I acknowledge the work he's done with us and thank officers for the work they've done with us. We've worked tirelessly to try to find ways of identifying funding sources for Webby High School. It's significant uptake for all members to set out to try and find funds to build a new school. We're halfway there, which is quite an achievement. We do need more from the government, but we also need the council to do more. And councillor Prior should perhaps reflect on the fact that his letter writing recurrently doesn't seem to have the desired effect. I should perhaps think about how he's writing his letters and the sort of things that he has to say in them. If you're always having a go at the government, it's not so much a surprise that they're receptive to what you have to say. So let's hope can continue to work together. Councillor Stevenson's white paper is spot on and I'm pleased to support it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cumming?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. This white paper is fundamentally about leadership. Because this white paper motion is about this Labour administration making its position clear and unambiguous. As Sam said before, I was sort of a statement of intent that we want our young people back in school from September. That as a council administration, you're actually going to do everything within your influence to make it so. We don't pretend you have all believers. We appreciate you don't have all believers, but you do have influence and how you use that influence matters greatly. Instead of focusing on the why we can'ts, which was councillor Prior's stock-in phrase. Instead of focusing on why we can'ts, it's really time this administration focus on the what we cans. Because there are many things council can't do to make clear to assist schools in getting back in September. I appreciate that might be harder than simply complaining about government, but it's what's needed. It's what the people of the city expect. It's what the people of the city deserve. I've seen some incredible work during lockdown from incredible teachers. I've seen incredible resilience by young people. But instead of simply complaining councillor Prior, indeed councillor Golden, instead of simply complaining about the government and complaining about what can we do as a council? What are you going to do as the executive member to help our schools ensure that your people can start schooling in September? It's time to step up to the plate. It's time to stop blaming others and it's time to use your good offices to help our young people. So we get children back to school in September, so we can close the gap on learning, so we can make sure our young people get the education they deserve, that they don't want to be a sliver falling behind and that you do your part for our young people here in this city and you get on to it now. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Lady Richards? Can I remind my members, this will be councillor Richards' made speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Education has quite rightly been an important issue raised today by many people. I seek in support of the white paper move by councillor Ryan Stevenson. Because this motion is all about the importance of education to all young people in Leeds. My entire working life has been spent trying to ensure that all children receive the best opportunity in life through the education they receive. Now, it's clear that the pandemic has been extremely challenging for schools, staff, parents and pupils. So it's only right that the speakers have noted that we thank all schools and academies and all within them in need as they have worked through their ways through the past three months. Recent circumstances have obviously impacted student access to their belongings and schools and staff have worked really hard to create virtual resources and activities to support students in the home learning environment. However, from September, it's vital that students tend schools to re-engage in a more formal and structured way. Now, all staff in schools, it is all staff, have the safety of children in mind. The systems have been created to enable those students to return to school and restart learning. As a member of the governing body of my local primary school, we spent last Friday morning working through, and I jest not, the 38-page risk assessment which has been put together to support re-entry of the children in September. Looked many various ways to make it happen. And I was attended a team's meeting this morning at a large secondary school where I still work with the complete restructuring of timetable, the development of new teaching and learning strategies and the general logistics of bringing 1,700 students back into school were shared with the whole staff. It was amazing session showing the resilience of those staff and their determination to make a challenging situation work for the advantage of students. And it's been generally recognised that classrooms have had a differential impact on individual students, I've seen myself. Some have thrived in an independent learning pattern, enjoying the change of structuring of day and work. Others have missed the collective teaching mode and the individual care for teachers. So we've had previously positive students, soft bias. So I feel it's vital we address this as soon as possible. The Secretary of State for Education recently stated that education is order to get job. As historian, I would better differ with him. And it's also a vital component to find place in society, understand your past and look to the future for the opportunities which good education will provide. Encouraging all students to return in September is a significant step towards achieving this. And I support this motion accordingly. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Barry Anderson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, what do you make of this wonderful debate today? I don't know. What really agrees with me more than anything else is the Labour Party shoot about a lot. It's always the government. It's always the government. They are in power. They are in control in the city. So the education of our children rests with them first, last and always. They are totally responsible for it. They don't appear to want to take responsibility when bad news is going about, all somebody else's problem. But when good news is always the front, saying we've done this, we've done that. You've got the resources. The point of a good council is one that takes the resources that it got and uses those resources to bestow on its citizens. Can the Labour administration in this city really say that they are delivering for everybody? They are trying to do something for everybody with the resources that they've got? Use your intelligence, use your forefoot, think through, think of things you can do to help people. Bring it forward in terms of what we're trying to do. You'll get support from the Conservatives if you show willing. But you're not going to show willing. All you want to do is criticize everybody. Today, you've tarred everybody with same brush, just because you're a Conservative, say this, that, that. Think before you actually say anything. There are good people are there who want to do the best. There are governors are there who are determined to do what they can best for their school. They wanted to do it. They wanted to get people back into school again, but they were held back because in one of the schools I'm connected with, we're all ready to go. And then all of a sudden, the council issue instructions, be careful, be careful. You know, that's not the message. You need to go out there and say to people, yes, we do need to educate children. We don't want to see people left behind. But surely it's one of the words mantra, we want anybody left behind. This, it was your chance to show the leadership in this city. You unfortunately failed and hopefully people will remark on that when it comes to the next set of elections. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can the colour constituency insist to sum up these?
Thank you. Well, Lord Mayor, I agree entirely with councillor Anderson. Who do you thought a bland white paper, thanks for city teachers and asking the administration to formally bid new government, new defensive results. It's no surprise to us that councillor Golden is hiding behind Labour's amendment. We all knew the cost of a seat on the executive board and now we know the price. Surprisingly, this amendment from the new Labour and Lib Dem coalition completely misses the point. Councillor Prior seems to be making a habit to writing letters lately, but it's not to the left we need. We need to actually do some work and submit a formal bid for funding. By ending the white paper, as he has, he has effectively said the council doesn't need to formally submit for new EFE funds because it's previously sent a short notice to the Secretary of State. Simple one, Lord Mayor. If this administration spent as much effort working with the deficit to get the best farce as it could dodge accountability, city schools would be in a much better place. As was acknowledged by councillor Prior, the sterling work of Webby Ward members over a number of years has inspired half of the required £24 million rebuild hospital of Webby High School. One has to wonder why successive Rotherham Ward members, both Labour and Lib Dem, haven't done the same in their own wards. What we do know, Lord Mayor, is that when given the option last week to look injecting up to £7 million into Royd's High School, the Liberal Democrats popped up Labour's plan once again to invest in Easton. It's clear in Leeds, Lord Mayor, that with this Labour and Liberal Democrat duo, it's two sides of the same rusty old coin. I welcome the spirit of councillor Forster's amendment. I know that it comes from her experience having a teacher in the city. The only reason I feel unable to support the amendment full is that the EFE is already putting in place extensive guidance for schools to return in September. This was mentioned in detail by councillor Richards and I congratulate her for making history by delivering this council's first ever virtual maiden speech. Lord Mayor, my motion acknowledges that additional funding for central government is required. As councillor Lam said, it's also a case of underinvestment by this council and successive governments over the past 20 years has left both Webby High School and Royd's High School in particular need of attention. The Prime Minister's announcement of £1.7 billion for schools rebuild, repair and upgrade is to be welcomed. As councillor Forster rightfully pointed out, we fear that Labour will once again miss an opportunity to fix its school rooms while the sun is shining. And with that, Lord Mayor, I move motion.
Thank you. Now going to call for the votes and only ask a few weeks of each group. So we vote on the first amendment in the name of councillor Forster. Councillor Anderson, do you vote?
We vote against, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cumming?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Campbell?
We vote for.
Sorry?
We vote for the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Ochinson?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
Abstain, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
Paul, Lord Mayor. Sorry, Paul, Lord Mayor.
I'm sorry, but this amendment is lost. We've got second amendment in the name of councillor Prior. Councillor Anderson?
We vote for, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cumming?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote for.
Councillor Ochinson?
We vote for this, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
Abstain, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Blackburn?
Paul, Lord Mayor.
Has been carried, so councillor Prior, we will not go into substantive moment for councillor Prior. Councillor Dawson?
Councillor Dawson? Sorry, we vote for.
Councillor Cumming? Cumming, sorry. Councillor Owen?
I know we sit on the executive board, but we abstain, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell?
We vote for.
Councillor Ochinson?
We vote for this, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
Abstain, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
Paul, Lord Mayor.
This vote is being carried, so. Yeah, move to the second white paper, which is in the name of councillor Ochinson. Councillor Bentley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I feel very privileged to bring this white paper to council to recognise and support the work done by all the voluntary unpaid unpaid carers in the country. I'm also pleased to get the support of the administration, albeit the short amendment, which I am more than happy to accept and have incorporated into the white paper. Lord Mayor, we've all seen our awards, the tremendous work done by unpaid carers. Indeed, I know that there are members of this council present who fulfil these roles as well as other commitments that the council has had. Our white paper calls for more support that would improve the lives of unpaid carers and consequently the lives of those being cared for. And the very short time available, I just want to concentrate on how more support could be given to those carers who are trying to combine caring with employment. Five million people in the UK, that's 1 in 7 of the workforce, combine caring responsibilities with work. These carers are not only paying taxes, nursing insurance, contributing to the growth of the economy, but also saving tax care at £95 billion a year by providing unpaid care to their loved ones. There's often a false and old fashioned image of a carer as someone who would be at home in the U.A., clearly a one, doesn't have a job, not traditionally working, but this is far from the truth. Unpaid carers are like the rest of us. They have careers, they have aspirations and they want the best for the people they care for. As a state and as a society, we do not give enough thought, support or protection to unpaid carers in employment. There is evidence of employers discriminating against carers when it comes to employment or promotion. Unpaid carers fulfill in hidden from applying for jobs or applying for promotion because employers actuate. They're also rupt to ask special adjustments like additional leave, extra hours, homeworking etc, as it might prejudice their employment. And although there are employers who have good working practices regarding employees with caring responsibilities, including, I'm pleased to say, this council, we're still a lot to be done. So in conclusion, Lord Mayor, we call for carer to become protected characteristic employment law so that employees or potential employees can't discriminate against just because they have caring responsibilities. I move white paper, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dawson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second the white paper, named by councillor Jonathan Bentley. Been blown away by the humanity in support many have shown towards not just those vulnerable and shielding members of their own family, but also to friends, neighbours and others within their community. It's been very heartwarming to see how many people have reacted to the challenges of pandemic to become the glue that has helped keep our society together. I have to say that this has often been the face of mixed messages from the government, certain government advisers. Advice that's often been slow in coming and in slow in implementation. I know a lot of people working in retirement apartments could not get hold of PP for any rise early on as they would miss out a vote. But me have stepped up to mark and then go over and above the call of duty to help those vulnerable to keep them safe as possible whilst they're shielded has been their absolute credit. During these challenging times, many people are hoping to all political colours genuinely look to argument through leadership and hope they could respond accordingly. Sadly, me feel the response has not been simply good enough. Well, here's an opportunity for the government to get right and to recognise those in the community who have been getting it right. So many people, carers have really gone over and above and without them, this community, this, it collapsed. And as my colleague said, the £90 billion they're worth, let's see some of that money go and back to them and protect them and their employment rights. So I think absolutely correct the government should recognise financially reward those carers their great acts of compassion. They should also protect against discrimination, which is why paper shows a number of issues the government can put in place to ensure those efforts do not go unnoticed and they're not discriminated against and to encourage all people to help society by doing such valuable work as cares. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Anderson, Perline Anderson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to be moving the Conservative amendment, councillor Bent's white paper. I totally agree with the sentiment of councillor Bentley's white paper, but it's a very emotional, immediate reaction to something that has kind to sharp focus during Covid. The whole question of how you look after carers is to be looked at in a post-Covid light. Without any of the emotional toll that culture has taken on everyone, not as carers. While we all understand carers do a prepared job, that is not the same as actually knowing what life is like for carers day in and day out. Carers give up careers, choice about how to live their lives, sometimes forgo their own health needs and have to rely on third party help, all sorts of things. Lot of carers don't even like to met the carers, it's just something they do out of love and devotion, unfortunately can't live on love. Unpaid carers save a seat an absolutely huge amount of money by looking after loved ones in their own homes. It is estimated that 75,000 or one in 10 of the population lead are carers. Carers provide 1.5 million hours of unpaid care per week, which would cost 1.4 billion to replace that care professionally. And there are so many calls on public purse across the city for many different services. And there are so many calls on public purse across the city for many different services and needs. It's not realistic to expect that this can be funded by taxpayer and school. So what do we do to take their lives more comfortable and give them the support they need? Carers allowance has recently been in base. Locally, leads are restrained to support on carers leads. You might have referred a number of residents to and do a fantastic job. There are many other third sector organisations that help too, our wonderful neighbourhood network. The government has provided funding to extend Carers UK Helpline opening times and information advice so that unpaid carers are able to access trusted information and advice. Further guidance is expected to publish shortly for young carers. The government also announced a £5 million Carers Innovation Fund as part of the Carers Action Plan. In terms of the private members bill, it is absolutely right that carers who do work are not object to discrimination in the workplace. And I can understand why carers may be reluctant to take up employment as they feel nervous about having to ask for time off or to find a job that is flexible enough to cope with their caring responsibilities, where they may have to drop everything at a moment's notice. However, I think it's important that where carers can take up employment, be able to so without any worries of discrimination. However, I do not feel making carer a protected characteristic is realistic and they create a barrier to employment rather than make it easier as employers may shy away from employing people who are carers because of the perceived problem of the protected characteristic legislation. People across the city have been pulling together and caring for someone they might not have even met for during Covid.
Councillor Anderson?
Yes? I've just gone on settings, Lord Mayor. I think we need a comprehensive look at carers and how we support them across the city stepping back from the emotion of COVID. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ward?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to second councillor Anderson's amendment to this white paper. And I think we all recognise that carers and key workers have done an amazing job during crisis. Particularly in my own ward, the I've said officers and volunteers and officers at council that supported them have done a great job. And a lot of this has all been unpaid as far as volunteer carers concerned. Some people who came volunteering and thought they would just help out a bit of shopping have now become carers for people who need more than that coat provided the door to open and they needed more care. And I think we'd all support that. And I'm surprised councillor Bentley, you missed the opportunity because we could have had a whole white paper and we'd all made those comments and we'd all be supportive of what happened with carers and how carers have been supported by both government and the council. And then you'd have to turn this white paper with the four bullet points they have, which really, not really offensive in their own words, but the statement that you and councillor Downs make has to bash the government again. And a lot of carers don't want to be tagged with who have been a carer because they don't think they're a carer because they do it for the love of doing the job. Councillor Anderson's amendment does address some of your points. And I think that if you'd done a bit more work with the wit, you might have got to a point where you could have got all party agreement on this. And also, we need to look whether government can provide more support. And I'm sure that in autumn statement, they will provide more support. And so I'm pleased to support councillor Cohen Anderson's paper amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Troward to second the amendment? Sorry, to move the amendment? Councillor Troward?
Yes, sorry, Lord Mayor, I'm meeting myself. Thank you very much for the opportunity to recognise and celebrate the role of carers, Lord Mayor. Their value to society is just endless, especially in these, we really do value them. And we do fund carers leads and work to do that. And we also fund the neighbourhood networks. It's often unknown that, you know, these sectoral organisations do their work. We commission them to it, to want to do their work. They, we pose a very small amendment to increase the carer element in universal credit. Councillor allows me claim alongside universal credit, but it deducts in full. And in order for carers claiming universal credit to benefit from the increased carers allowance, the carer element of universal credit also needs to be increased in value. Our own advice has had a significant impact on the lives of many carers. Recent Carers UK report suggests there are additional 2.8 million workers combining work and unpaid care since that break down. Unfortunately, this means some carers have to reduce their hours at work or stop working entirely to provide this care. We're already recognising the protected characteristic of the Equality Act. There should be protected by law against direct discrimination or harassment because of carers' responsibilities. But we need to encourage employers to have care and be positive. We do do that in these, we have a lot of own working going on. It often was the help I'll be in board and a strategy that we'll adopt. Councillors have included our equality and first policy and in our practice assessment processes, our carers network came to provide information, support, and funding for all staff who are working carers. The CCG commission carers leads so to gather them. Alongside their incredible guiding support to carers, they promote working cares issues with employers through training events and raise awareness. We're heavily reliant on unpaid carers, as has been mentioned, to help support our care sector. Given the current financial uncertainty found throughout across the country, this project highlights why data use of cross social care, a sector which needs more stable solutions going forward. Health and care must be treated as part of an integrated system which includes carers. Very importantly, they need that support. Need more secure financial tracking, social care generally, and needs to be a fair pay increase in social care to enable social care to come with the sector in their recruitment. At the stake of combined today and as I'm to care for the most vulnerable people in our communities. And I'm moving the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Tomlinson, second?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to second councillor Troward's amendment and talk about his commitment to ensuring that young carers are forced to have equal life chances to their peers, are able to flourish in pride, are protected for possible harm, and are able to attend and achieve in their education. My glad this white paper shines a light on the difficulties faced by young carers, those mildly impressive young people who manage to climb their schooling with looking after their loved one. Young carers can carry out complex or physical tasks such as shopping, flirting, cooking, assist someone with physiotherapy or looking after their siblings. Often in difficult circumstances without support, as I stated for their peers, who have more opportunities to enjoy their childhood. Our Alton Health, our Children's Families Directorate, alongside the CCG jointly fund the Leeds Young Carers Sports Service, delivered by family action. They offer advice, information and targeted support through on tour work and group work in schools, community venues and homes. There is a strong role in awareness raising in schools and other agencies, help in identification of young carers who are often hidden in communities and inform them of the support that's available to them. As part of this, they're currently working with schools to develop the school standards. With similar action, all schools are taking to improve the learning experience and outcomes of young carers. We also have young carers working group with representatives from Alton Health, children and families, primary healthcare, schools, voluntary sector and representatives with lived experience. This group is responsible for implementing a strategic action plan that sits under the Carers Partnership Strategy. Elsewhere, Carers Leads also provides a sports service to 16 to 25 year olds with one-on-one support sessions, advice and emotional support. They also run group sessions, activity and day trips to enable young adult carers to have a break and meet other people who are caring. We must not get complacent and enjoy continually listening to what young carers have to say. As a city, we must do our best to assist them and move any barriers they may face in life. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think that all councils in their walls have carers, whether the carers be young, middle aged or old, all have, all are looking and caring for usually somebody in their family. Unpaid work, lots of hours. And sure, some councils will know themselves, as I do, going back some years, with an elderly mother, that in my case, my mother, whatever happened, did not want to go home. She wanted to keep her independence and where she couldn't. Then we arranged for her to come in the mirror. There was about two minutes' way so we could provide hot meals for her, bring nothing down to the flat. That sort of thing is what carers do and lots of things, but that's just an example. But it's not, you know, it's not only that. People do it, not for money, it's for love. Because in the case, if it's an elderly parent, they look after you, so you look after them. So certainly, the, there you have carers, they are helping the council. Because for every person, I'm thinking, I'm working, I'm more on elderly people, but as I said, carers come in all ships and dices, but for elderly people, it means that it's one less person going in.
Councillor Blackburn? I think we've asked councillor Blackburn, but we have councillor Lacy and Bill, he returns. Councillor Dyer and Lacy?
Trying to get in, there we are. Can you hear me, Lord Mayor?
I can.
Very good. What do you, Lord Mayor? I'm speaking in sort of councillor Anderson and don't appear to have the camera anywhere. No, my, Lord Mayor, I think we're all in agreement about the tremendous contributions unpaid carers make to the health and care system and to our city and its people more generally. And I'd like to add my voice to this paying tribute to the efforts of unpaid carers and indeed, all key workers and NHS staff have done so much to help people through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Unpaid carers are people often of no formal training or professional care experience who are by definition not paid for the services they provide, who are nevertheless indispensable in providing care and support for thousands of people in need. Nearly a tenth of the population of leads fall into this category and they give more walks of life. And we, I'm sure you all know someone who is an unpaid carer or has been or will be at some point in their lives. There are some two outstanding figures, some of which may be mentioned already, but which they're repeating. Carers provide £4.5 billion hours of unpaid care per week. That's a week in use. It would cost £1.4 billion a year to replace that care. According figure that went to the Health and Wellbeing Board in 2019. And those figures are now to the only growing larger. The question then is about how we share our support for unpaid carers. I think so, what the government's done so far has evolved, as noted in the amendment. Later carers allowance has been increased and funding has been provided to extend the Carers UK Helpline opening time in the information and advice services. And we also wait for all these new guys aimed to help the young carers. Lord Mayor, we realise that more can and should be done to help unpaid carers, particularly around removing barriers to employment and ensuring that they have the support they need to keep doing what they do. But we need to get a balance right, in many cases, what that balance is, we're there between individual carers. I think we can agree that we want to support unpaid carers and we can agree that we need to do more, but more considerations needed of what actions take. Hope for some of these questions can be tackled in the forthcoming guidance and the long awaited social care agreeing paper. I support the amendment, Michael Anderson. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Fehr?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Apologies, I've lost connections, I've literally just logged back on, so can you all hear?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, apology. Well, it's, I have to be honest with councillors today, I was cautious about speaking in this debate. And the reason I was cautious to speak in this is because of the fact, as many of you know, I for many years cared for my mum until December, unfortunately, when she passed away. And as a result, it's become a difficult subject only from admitting before when bashful stops you from admitting your carer status to then having to deal with the fact that you then really want to deal with the issue. And it means that in many ways, I feel that sometimes I qualify to talk on this, sometimes I'm not, I'm not qualified to talk on it because I haven't had a go for the coronavirus situation, having been a carer, despite having been a carer for a long time since I was in the last year at primary school. But I must say that I appreciate the tenet in this white paper. But I think there is one area that we really need to look into further, which is that applies of young carers. Because I am concerned that the white paper only includes the matter of free travel on bus services. Actually, they're not included in the D W P, the social security system, welfare system. And it means that as a result, we need to really actively look at how we can support your carer better. Have to be frank as well, carers leads does a fantastic job in a city. But a young carer, and even really up until I became a councillor, I didn't know about carers lead. Maybe that was my own reluctance to admit what I was, or maybe even was potentially I had just slipped through the net. So it's very difficult because of the carers I know finding it difficult to admit. And then as a result, you feel that you're actually trespassing territory you shouldn't be trespassing in when you admit talking about your loved ones that you want to and claim them as a being a carer. So I think we've got to be careful, we don't act in a mission on this. And instead, we wait for the green paper, but we certainly set out our intent for how we're going to support young carers and carers across our city. The fact that we've got, I believe, according to Carers UK Carer Lead, there was figures of 6.5 unpaid carers, 6.5 million carers across the whole of the country, that's increased by about 4 million during the crisis. So I hope we can take this stock and realise where we are, not act as a knee jerk, make sure that we make it proper and right in the response we have, so that they can deal, that they can admit when they're a carer, that actually do seek out help, rather than feeling bunkered at home and having to deal with pressures every day, life and having to potentially miss out on support that really helped them and really pushed them on, they never thought it was possible. So I think that's all I can say, Lord Mayor, but I appreciate the sentence that people have said in their speeches. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cowan?
Thank you, my lord mayor. In fact, I want, expecting to get to speak today, and I'm very honest, my lord mayor, this is one of those occasions where I have just listened to councillor Firth. I'm very much aware of, well, how does one top that, how does one follow that? And in fairness, Lord Mayor, I don't think one really can, because we've had the privilege of hearing from somebody who was for so many years a carer, who had walked the wall and doesn't need to simply talk the talk. And one comment, Lord Mayor, is that I think it's a shame that on a white paper that is certainly well intentioned, there wasn't an opportunity as whipped to find a form of words. I don't think we would be in a million miles away that we didn't as whipped seek to find a form of words that could have supported cross the piece, cross party that we would have needed to amend. And councillor Anderson's amendment is a very sensible amendment. And indeed, I think the comments that councillor Watworth made about wanting to see what is likely to come in some on the chancellor to further his carries is also going to be incredibly helpful. With that, Lord Mayor, I very much support councillor Anderson's amendment. Thank you, my lord mayor.
Thank you. Can I call councillor Bentley to some more? Councillor Bentley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. That was really well timed, because I've only just managed to get my connection back on into debate and unfortunately missed some of the contributions and one from councillor Firth that I was looking forward to. In fact, when I saw his name on the order paper, it looked as if he wasn't going to speak, so I pleased to ask. I'm sorry that I missed it because I know the experience and knowledge and wisdom that he brings to is king well. So I'm sorry to miss that, perhaps. But a lot of good contributions and I think the spirit of everybody is there supporting this. I'm always disappointed when, particularly when people say, oh, well, had you in a different way, we could have supported it. Well, we write white papers to get across what we want to get across and whether Conservatives are going to support it or not is not really that high in our priorities. And I think the two speeches that came from councillor Anderson and councillor Watworth were really two speeches looking for a amendment, because the amendment that they've obtained doesn't really get it anywhere. It sort of looks at how carers are, the good that they do, and it says, and more should be done. Well, without saying anything about it. Anyway, the support from councillor Troward is very much appreciated. I'm sorry I couldn't spend more time on young carers. That could be different, different thing, a different white paper altogether. But let's come back to what we're actually asking for. We're asking for recognition and support. And yes, as councillor Blackburn said, some people do do this just for love. That's fine, but there's 1.2 million carers living in poverty because they're doing it for love. That's their reward for devotion and saving tax care so much money. Unpaid carers are so essential to the nation's health and care system. It would collapse without unpaid carers. Councillor Anderson says, oh, well, if the carers allowance has gone up. Well, yes, it went by £1.10 a week and it's gone to £67.25 a week, which is the lowest of all care or all the allowances the government pays. But as soon as you start to work and you start earning £128 a week, you lose it, you know, that's threshold. And that means you work for 15 hours at minimum wage, you will lose your allowance.
Councillor Bentley?
No wonder, no wonder there was so much poverty and I would urge everyone to support this white paper. Thank you, my lord mayor.
Thank you. And now to the votes again, I just want to achieve with average groups. Can the first amendment in the name of councillor Anderson, Michael Anderson?
We vote against, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cohen?
We vote for, my lord mayor.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote against.
Councillor Ochinson?
We vote for, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
Against, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn, I'm not sure councillor Blackburn?
It's councillor David Blackburn, councillor Blackburn's internet gone now. The rundown, which is decided, we vote against.
Okay, thank you. And that vote has been lost. We've got to the second amendment in the name of councillor Troward. Councillor Dawson?
We vote for, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cohen?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
We vote in for.
Yeah.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote in for.
Councillor Ochinson?
MB is we abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
For, my lord mayor.
Councillor Bell?
We vote in for, my lord mayor.
That vote has been carried. We will vote for this sensitive motion in the name of councillor Troward. Councillor Dawson?
We vote for, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cohen?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote for.
Councillor Ochinson?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
For, my lord mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
For, my lord mayor.
That vote has been carried. And that was my number, that this is full council and the forum went off. Are you going to be, I since councillor Gosden contributed to my charity, who has four ears? And I'm sure all of you will be on it and I?
It was councillor Gosden, I'm sure, my lord mayor.
But what is, sorry councillor Gosden, what is you, but I'm fine with it. Thank you. Can we move on to the third white paper in the name of councillor Lewis? Can I call in councillor Lewis? in Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The last white paper, the end of the day was a bit longer than we expected, so hopefully this wouldn't be controversial. We are looking at situationality completely unprecedented. Start of our white paper, we had our basic interlink, public sector workers, key worker local and theatre of health as to a crisis. Be remitted me not to thank our area monitor and the team at Net for the work they've done, set up a food bank in one of our communities to make sure people get fed, and also Maxwell at Home cover part of our ward as well. I think this deal is made to say that, as all our members have said, during course of today's meeting, that everybody has stood up to support our community during this event. That is, that is fine, and we are welcome that. But as we look forward, we need to make sure we've got council and the voluntary sector left that can continue to do that, particularly if we fall into a second wave, which I know people are predicting could happen later this year. We're looking position now, where we're counting this financial position. In any other year, we'd have already been going through a section one, one-four notice, and all that entails. We are, I cannot underestimate the severity of the situation we are in. We set a budget in February that all the faith intended to last us through this year, yet we've seen a £200 million black hole open up against that budget, in terms of things had to pay for during the Covid crisis, including food, PPE, extra money to support social care, but also the lost income, which we've seen council facilities closed, and also to follow government guidance. We've also seen businesses, and most importantly, people struggling, and people struggling to make unpaid work, how service that they would expect. This is a position we're in, this position of a law with every other council is having to face up to. Our fiscal class stack, the junior executive board, that we're looking at £117.8 million deficit, that's a next year's budget, and the next with executive board, we're looking at £64 million per annum for this year's budget. And that's after we receive £70 million from the government to help us with our costs, but we are still a long way off. If we don't, if we don't manage balance of budget, we are looking at devastating consequences of both our ability to deliver public services, our ability to fund the voluntary sector in Leeds, and our ability as a city to respond to COVID crisis. At the start of this crisis, the Conservative sector takes a local council to get everything needed, and we need a lot more. We've been constructive in the way we have engaged the government, but we don't believe they've given us enough support so far. And that's what this white paper notes. We said, we said continue to lead in support council staff and our voluntary sector partners. Those staff that have served us all, welcome whatsoever during this crisis, but if the situation is resolved, be facing culture redundancy in this autumn as a result of the government not helping us out. We owe the good things, and we call everybody to support our white paper. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Egan?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I'd like to join the colleagues in this person, my deepest sympathies to everyone who has lost someone they loved to COVID-19, and all those who lost a loved one for whatever reason, and were not able to mourn them in the way that we normally do. I also echo everyone's comments of being tribute to our key workers who have kept Leeds running during this very difficult time. It's clear from any of the speeches they, that councils and council workers, including Arrow, have played a huge role responding to the pandemic. It's therefore disappointing, but not surprising, that the government is acknowledging that contribution by giving us financial support and certainty at this time when we in our citizens have never needed them all. I don't think it's too much to ask that government reimburses us for lost income and interest funding during the pandemic, particularly when we were told that the government would do whatever is necessary to support us. We believed that, and now we have to pay for the consequences, having relied yet again on the broken promise from government. Last announcement from government, the latest in the last announcement from government, the latest funding package was described as comprehensive. Comprehensive means that you'll have to show the first 5% of lost income and 25% to the rest state. Comprehensive leaves us a funding gap of 25 million this year alone. And this is after 10 years of such costs to lower authority funding. It's hard to believe that this is the best the government could come up with, when we gave several suggestions on how they could help, help drive those of funding. The publicly words Lombard could be written off, or at least reduce the interest rate for our debt, given the government itself now borrow record low rates. NHS providers have had over 13 billion of debt written during the crisis. So why aren't councils, our social care providers, given the same courtesy? Lord Mayor, please step up during this crisis to support our residents. So I'm calling the government to support us. I can, Councillor Lewis's white paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councillor Robinson to move the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And in light of the leadership graph behind Councillor Lewis, I thought he said something unprecedented. I thought he said leadership promoted. But we know that that will be a huge boost for the city when they are promoted, and another huge boost to the city. I hope that all members back the amendment that I proposed today, because the amendment doesn't strike a mission change, a hard work that's always taken place, actually to bring us all together to meet that challenge. I've been informed that the budget gap is 200 million, and in light of the very recent answer funding, and what's been said by other members, and confirmed by finance teams, it's 64 million in 2020, 2020 will period. That is still a significant challenge. The government have offered a plethora of funding pots, including one that has allowed 20,000 people to not have to pay council tax this year, which is huge, protecting many of the hardest-to-reach residents from lowest income grounds. But there is much more to be done. And that's what this amendment proposes. We already know that the budget in February sets out £28 million of savings that will require. We also already know the minimum review provision, essentially the process of paying back the mortgage for a few years, so you can get more cash in hand, has been, has been one of the infot, but now the chips come out of the roof. We need to start paying that money back. And it's worth remembering, council, that council's debt stands at 2.2 billion at the moment, and has gone 800 million in the last five years alone. We didn't have Covid five years ago. That has increased the council's decisions and choices, and now we must make some more difficult choices. So what my member proposes is four things. Firstly, a cross-party working group to form the budget. We all want to get and see to agree what we can and can't do, and look at making those different decisions together. There are many different decisions that need to be taken, and we already know that decisions are being made now will have an impact on the future. It's better to form that cross-party budget working group now. Secondly, we've also suggested looking at the challenges that business face by having a business and economic support task set up urgently. The Chair of Commerce has shown in the past, business confidence in Leeds is lessened than other parts of Yorkshire. Businesses believe there is a robust rate bound back, but the council must be there to support them. Looking at digital sector, global trade, actually our manufacturing sector as well. Thirdly, a cross-party working group to look at red tech and cutting regulation, and that includes changing some of the planning system in Leeds to make a more nimble organisation to meet these challenges. And finally, all of this culminates in chief executive producing a renewed economic strategy and a debt recovery plan. We can all, across all parties, have confidence in. We're all going to have to face a new normal. It's time to work jointly. It's time to work together. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Aronson?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. In that, in Councillor Robinson's amendment, I first like to draw attention to similarities between the Conservative group motion and that of Councillor Lewis. While there are clearly some differences between our respective positions, there is also a lot of common ground, and I think we can all agree just how devastating and how difficult the path forms have been. It's absolutely right that we recognise the resilience of Leeds residents and local community from Webby to Wheatwood and Garth to Gaisley. Our communities have stuck together and tried to find a way through this exceptionally difficult time. My Lord Mayor, I think we all, as full council, appreciate the extraordinary efforts of NHS and social care staff, all the key workers in emergency services, teachers and thousands of volunteers have all helped to get our city through this crisis. Effort have been extraordinary, and it's right that we all put on record our thanks to those individuals and local organisations, such as neighbourhood networks, who have made a massive contribution to our city. Councillor Lewis's motion and Councillor Hayden's speech all are quite rightly refer to those who have lost their lives during this pandemic. We should remember them, and our condolences and sympathies go out to those who have experienced loss as a result of COVID-19. For many, life will never be the same again, and we should remember those that we've lost. My Lord Mayor, whilst it's right to remember the past and right to acknowledge the self-contribution many people have made, it also incumbent upon us to look to the future, see to develop and deliver a blueprint for how Leeds will recover over the coming months and years. Councillor Robinson has already highlighted ways that we think that can be done. We should put our local businesses, local entrepreneurs and local workforce at the heart of this city's recovery. As the next mayor of a market town, I know how important local economy is to the community and the wider area. My Lord Mayor, the private sector has made it what it is today, an economic powerhouse of the north, and we are certain that they will play a leading role in the recovery that must now come. Yes, we should lobby for additional money, urge them to provide more assistance where it's needed. The council faces significant financial pressures. We absolutely understand that, and will, on a cross-party basis, support efforts to get additional funding, particularly areas where income has been lost, such as business rates and council tax, and more widely cross-services would normally generate millions of pounds of income each year to authority. As Councillor Robinson said, this is a huge and announced challenge, and one that we will have to work together on to resolve. But my Lord Mayor, can we risk to expect government to write off previous debt accrue over the last 15 years? We should lobby to support, but the problems posed by MRP were there before coronavirus, have now been exacerbated matters through. Back main, borrowing levels have increased significantly over the past five years, as Councillor Robinson said. Let's work together and let's lobby together to get more money for our city.
Councillor Aronson?
On final sentence, Lord Mayor, unless it's also a text, wants to develop our own solutions, as well as seeking enhanced partnerships and support from government. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor David Blackburn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I speak in support of the motion in the name of Councillor Lewis. I think that it's a sensible way forward. I think it's balanced, and it's one that we should all get behind. The fact is, the success we've had in dealing with coronavirus so far has been that we've stuck, basically stuck together. Clearly, we're now at a stage where we're now trying to recover, and we are dealing with the financial consequences of what has happened. And in fairness, governments have been hopeful in that, during that process. But we have now, both this year, next year, and probably the year after, going to be in a financial position that puts us all in jeopardy. Government ministers understand and have said that, look, we couldn't have done what we did without local government. What we have to do is we have to protect local government, and we need government to support us. And not necessarily always by direct giving us funding, but allowing wisdom, meaning that we can get around some of the problems that we have. But that has got to be done, and they have got to support us, because if we get another wave, there will be nobody there to make sure that things turn out okay at the other side. I feel that the Tory amendment doesn't actually appreciate that. Although, there is one aspect of the Tory amendment which I would suggest to the administration that might want to adopt, and that is the setting up of a cross-party working group on the budget. For the best in the world, we have got to make some very, very difficult decisions in the near future. And the best way to do that is to get consensus cross-party. So I would ask the administration to do that. But my group will be supporting the administration's white paper. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Interesting following on David Blackburn, I found very little to disagree with, I have to say. In terms of the cross-party approach to budgets, I actually think that our budget process each year is pretty cross-hearted, because we do share all the information that is, in terms of what the council's budget is, and what the underlying financial formula is as well. And then as local parties, we offer our own solutions to what the council had fronted. And the majority of the times, as is mentioned by Councillor Carter, every time he puts his budget forward, 95% of stuff I'll agree on. So actually, setting up a special multi-party group to look at it, I'm not sure that would actually help. We just need to make sure we're sharing some of that we already have. In terms of how the council grows, I am concerned about how the Conservative amendment focuses primarily just on the private sector. And talking about how we need to help the digital sector do what it does, I think the council does a pretty good job highlighting and encouraging the digital sector. What we're lacking really is any kind of focus on developing our local economies. And I think there's something that has been brought forward by Covid, and actually need to have far more emphasis on, and far more investment by the council in. Behind me, you'll notice, we have the historic Gwathwell council offices. It's assets like that could be put to use. Currently, it's dudded to the council and the community to use to supper a civic enterprise, and encourage microenterprises, and to get the town centre going again. And those are the kind of initiatives that the council can back up. Councillor Robinson talking about deregulating and loosening up planning system, I'm sorry, but that is a real rare herring. And I would have thought that most of the councillors who are familiar with the planning system appreciate. It's not the councillors that are holding up house building happening in the city. Generally, it's the big developers and landlords. So you focus on the local, let's make sure that our asset-based community development actually means what we say it is, and make sure that every community in the city is enabled to set up social infrastructure, and to encourage the microenterprises that need in a whole new way, delivering economic growth.
Thank you. Councillor Jennings? Sorry, Councillor Jennings. Sorry, Councillor Dutton, sorry.
Not at all, Lord Mayor. Thank you. I'll just put my, that's better. This is probably, I think, in my 14 years on this council, the most important white paper we've buried. Every budget setting, the groups, they'll form their opinion about the addition of this budget, and we have the opportunity to discuss that in the February meeting. So it's utterly pointless to go over that again and dissect what bits of the budget we thought appropriate, and which bits we didn't. Because frankly, we are across the Rubicon. No matter what any of us thought of the administration's budget in February, it is gone. It is finished. It is blown out of the water by a complete unprecedented event. And therefore, I think we do need to have a radical rethink about how this council in the short term approaches its financial situation going forward, at least for another cycle in the next budget, because frankly, we are in really unprecedented times. It would be pointless, foolish and patristic to point fingers at certain projects of administration and say, "Told so." Because this isn't a moment for lot. This is actually a moment where we need to come together as a collective and make the decisions, all 99 of us, about how we see our city going forward, and collectively lobby the government on what is required. James Smith, some points around local services being in jeopardy, voluntary sector and staff, all valid. But I would add that it still ends the backdrop of projects that we could and should now look at urgently jettison, because the local services, voluntary sector and staff have to come first, and have to be top of that collective priority. I also think the reality is the government have done reasonably well by our city so far. And I'll add that I do think our last five years' financial strategies have left us less than resilient in terms of the position we now find ourselves in. But it's irrelevant. What is relevant? The fact that this is a watershed moment for Leeds, the country, the biggest peacetime emergency that any of us, hopefully, will ever to face. We won't go as far as supporting Matthews and Lindman, because again, stuff like planning, forget it, more relaxation of planning for us, the Whitmax over the back will understand why. But I do honestly believe now is the time for a cross-party setting, a financial arrangement, which genuinely works again. We might not all get along, but this is unprecedented. We need to get behind one another at people's Leeds. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Jennings?
My Lord Mayor, I'm pleased to support Labour White Paper, WP3, in the name of Councillor James Lewis. Let us be clear, 10 years of austerity policies have left the council in need of help. Austerity's weakened local government, the NHS and the care system, so the ability to respond to COVID-19 has been adrift on our resources. Our reserve of being used maintains the services that we need as a city to make up for the 254 million Tory government funds lost over the last 10 years. This is a well-run council like the sadly bankrupt North Hattanshire, which could be built out. Let us look at the last crisis, the bank crisis of 2008. It cost 1.2 trillion. Amazingly, the banks in the city paid off debt by 2017, leaving only 56 million short. During the period, poverty increased, see the Marm report of 2020. The value of the stock exchange grew from 2.6 trillion in 2009 to 4.2 trillion in 2015, and even during COVID, down now at 3.7 trillion. And bid and still paid shareholders, increasing from 60 billion in 2009 to 110 billion in 2019. And the richest 1,000 have seen their wealth increase by 538 billion since 2008. Current prices has cost us 350 billion. This is why millionaires for humanity in their letter this week say that they have a critical role to play in healing our world. We do have the money, a lot of it, and we ask government to raise taxes on people like us. Sadly, in that, there's no secretaries, or a few countries missing, such as Bina, inhabitants of Virgin Islands, for example. All we're asking for is a fair taxation system so that a forest of magic money trees can share wealth and deal with inequalities in this country, in the world, and climate change. We can work together in the same so just morality, which supports the most vulnerable society. That has been done with the core cities and county councils, who were each warning of a collapse in services without financial guarantees from government. We need a social capitalism urgently to properly funded, to meet the queen niece of the post-COVID generation population. Finally, Philip Alston from the United Nations said, and he retired last week, even before COVID-19, we squandered a decade in the fight against poverty. Economic growth is presented as the engine for eradicating poverty. After years of growth, the men and beneficiaries have been the wealthiest. Money can be fun and should support our public services at the cornerstone of survival society. We are asking very nicely.
Thank you. Councillor Connaught?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I start first of all by also paying respect to everyone who's lost loved ones during this pandemic? I welcome this white paper. It was hugely encouraging when announcements were made by the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, stating that government would do whatever is necessary to support councils throughout the pandemic. I thought that finally, the government might understand the positive impact a well-run ambitious local council can have in its area. Fortunately, what we've received so far hasn't upped that price at all. Leeds has cancelled so much to invest in inclusive growth across Leeds, supporting people base and productivity. We've seen the growth of late nights track thousands of people into the city centre each year, and we're planning to deliver a great programme of events through the year of cauldron 2023. We support thousands of residents each year to develop their skills through job shops, apprenticeships, schemes and other council services and investments. And we also invest in innovation in delivering our services and supporting local startups. In my own ward of Omly, we see this with targeted investment and intervention to tackle poverty and poor growth in priority neighbourhood New Wiltley. And just shout out during the crisis, New Work Community Association has to commend us for stepping to the beach and acting as a COVID-19 response for Omly. I'm sure my colleagues, including those across virtual floor, will join me in recognising the extra support which is going to be needed to support our local community, small businesses and local shopping centres post-pandemic. These things difficult to achieve from a set to lose of over £100 million, even after the extra funding the government provided as a result of pandemic. Prime Minister has said he wants to level up Britain, and the government is not responding with us today. While leveling up Britain and healing the north-south divide will require investing in councils all across the north, but especially our economic centres such as Leeds. Deevolution will help here, but there's so much we can do with more powers if we've all got less money. Councils and Leeds City Council in particular have a huge role in developing and strengthening our local economies. To do that, we need more funding, more flexibility and long-term certainty. We need certainty so that we can go back to our communities and support them and work with them to rebuild some of the devastating effects that the COVID-19 pandemic has had upon their lives and their livelihoods. And it's disappointing that the government doesn't seem to realise that. To help Leeds recover from the impact of COVID-19, I'm- To help Leeds recover from the impact of COVID-19, I'm betting in favour of this white paper. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Lewis now some more?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'll start by welcoming the tonne of all comment that have been made tonight, having the recognition from people including councillor Dobson and members that have spoken about the serious enough situation, the underlying position we're in at council. Forget I won't mention all the speakers in the day, but those speakers, councillor Conan McGold, Haringdon, who talked about the need for the council to support the private sector and work together, that's really vital for it. We know before COVID, government moving us towards more reliant on business breaks in terms of the council's having that strong partnership is really important for the future of the council and we wouldn't underestimate that. As councillor Jennings says, well, no, part of how we come through, there's going to be a different way of doing things to see. Rich come forward and say we won't be taxed, but to be part of it. Some of us is not just about how we cut cake, but it's about the size of the cake in terms of public spending, particularly we know that government borrowing is at record levels, potentially three times higher even than it was during the globe crisis of the decade four last. So no, the seriousness of the situation and I can say, tone of debate thinkers have supported that. I think, I think there is. You know, I don't go in too far into the positive tone debate, but there's a couple of comments, particularly from councillor Robinson, I wish to pick up on some of the financial policies we've taken, maintained, but have been a consequence of the amount of money we have taken away from us in terms of government grant reductions. And again, worth reflecting, it's been many years now since the government allocation of resources, which still in terms of our share of business rates, other grants and council tax is controlled by central government. We are the most centralised country in the country, the world. We have seen 1.7 billion taken away and that's impacted not just our services, but also some of the decisions we've made. I would say that our drawing distinction between borrowing from my services, if a service group don't want borrowing, then they would say which elements of the capital programme they don't want to see, welcome to the budget debate next year. But I'm sure we'll, we'll get to that at that point, I think, again, these are points I've made. Certainly, as an administration, I don't think we're going to apologise for investing in our, for mining our services, putting me where we have done. That's a do face a particularly difficult challenge ahead. I agree with all the comments that have been made about how we need to work across arty, cross arty fashion, and that's got to be central to this. But this is just about figuring processes that we've talked about. Actually, it's about impact on our ability to the social services, about people whose jobs are at risk, both that were directly for the council organisations to fund. And we can't, and we can't underestimate, as the speakers have commented on, including councillor Hayden, the huge total impact of this cost. So I move my white paper, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go into the votes and in the amendment of councillor Robinson, again, I just want to achieve with councillor Dawson?
We vote against, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cohen?
We vote in favour of it, Lord.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote against.
Councillor Dobson?
We vote for this one, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dobson?
We abstain, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
We abstain, Lord Mayor.
And after that, this amendment has been lost. Should we, for in motion of councillor Lewis, councillor Dawson?
We vote for, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cohen?
I'd say, my lord, the temptation called for a recorded vote is really.
Councillor Campbell?
We vote for.
Councillor Ochinson?
We abstain, my lord mayor.
Councillor Dutton?
We vote for, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Blackburn?
For, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And this motion has been carried, thank you. Oh, we can, well, I can breathe now, we have come to the end of the programme. But for the fish, I'd like to thank all members for your patience yesterday. It has been a very challenging, difficult meeting, but thank you. Also, I'd like to thank all the actors that take part in arranging for today to happen. Many of you know it's a couple of weeks trying, but none of you let us down. And also ID staff, I want to thank them for the work that they have done to make more remote meeting go ahead. So thank you. I was going to say, enjoy the rest of the afternoon and as I said, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.